Here.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Would everybody please rise for pledge of allegiance? And we have Ted Johnson with us, if you'd be so kind to lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody would take a look at the minutes of 5:15. If there's no corrections, questions, comments, motion, please.
Oracle move to approve the minutes of 5:15, 2018.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lurik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
I will abstain. Item four, we start tonight with a council proclamation, and we recognize Bob Basetti for his dedicated service as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. And I'm going to ask the city clerk to read that into the record, please.
Certainly. Council proclamation number 18-10 to Robert M. Basetti for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Whereas on May 3, 2006, Robert Basetti was appointed to the Police and Fire Commission by Mayor Richard Bolander. And whereas on July 17, 2014, Robert Basetti was elected as Commission Secretary by the members of the Police and Fire Commission and served in that capacity for three years. And whereas Robert Basetti has been instrumental in the appointment of two police chiefs, one fire chief, and countless police officers, firefighters, detectives, lieutenants, sergeants, battalion chiefs, captains, and assistant chiefs. And whereas Robert Basetti served as a liaison between the citizens of Oak Creek and the Police and Fire Departments, ensuring that these departments run smoothly, effectively, and with the utmost integrity. And whereas throughout his tenure as a member of the Police and Fire Commission, Robert Basetti has dutifully served the city of Oak Creek in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. And whereas June 1, 2018, after 12 years and one month of service, Robert Basetti retired from his position on the Police and Fire Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Robert M. Basetti for his dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Robert M. Basetti, dated this 5th day of June, 2018.
Thank you, Catherine. Would anybody from the council have any comments regarding Bob? Did anybody interact with him? No? I just want to thank Bob for his years of service. He was an integral part of the Police and Fire Commission and obviously made some very large decisions affecting this community in regards to our chiefs, our officers, and our firefighters along the way. Made great choices. We have great leadership. We have excellent employees within those divisions. So our thanks go out to Bob on behalf of the common council, myself, and the residents of Oak Creek. Want to thank Bob for his service. Motion, please.
Dukenyak move to approve council proclamation number 18-10 to Robert M. Basetti for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurik.
Aye.
Gets us to the public hearings. First one concerns a special assessment. It's for consideration of the city with the intention to exercise its power under section 3.200 of the municipal code to levy special assessments upon abutting properties of benefit such properties on the east side of South 27th Street to West South Branch Boulevard. Basically about 270 feet south of, 2970 feet southwest South Branch Avenue. So Catherine, will you please read the official one in?
Public hearing number one is the city's intention to exercise its power under section 3.20 of the municipal code of the city of Oak Creek to levy special assessments upon abutting property for benefits conferred upon such property in the following locations. Project number 18104, Water Main and Apprentices, the east side of South 27th Street from West South Branch Boulevard to approximately 970 feet south of West Branch Boulevard, dated this 1st day of May, 2018.
Thank you, Catherine. Ron coming up?
Good evening. This is our, this is first of two projects on the docket today.
Ron, can we just get your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ron Pritzloff.
We do know who you are, but...
Oak Creek Water and Sewer, 170 West Drexel. Excuse me. So we have four properties affected on 27th Street from the corner of South Branch and 27th down approximately four properties, 970 to 1,000 feet. We've got two very long dead ends, some of our longer dead ends in the city in this area. Long dead ends result in stagnant water and poor water quality, and we don't like to have that. So we'd like to connect the two from the corner there to approximately 1,000 foot south down towards, it looks like 9926 would be the last property affected onto the south there. Right? Yeah, 9926.
This is a public hearing, so we will make three calls. This will be the first call for any public input. Second call. And our third and final call. Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go on to item six and its consideration of resolution authorizing that water main. I'll open it up to the council for comments, questions. Chris?
Alderman, Guzekowski. I just would have to, like to say that we, I did not get any calls, emails, or comments about this assessment from anyone in the area.
Neither did I.
Seeing no other questions, I really don't have any. I haven't heard a word about this either, so it's been pretty quiet all the way around. Other than the three properties, is it pretty much open land or business?
Open land. I believe the first property south of the corner was the old, is that the old, I believe it's the old fireplace shop. So I think, you know, for the most part, the water's going to benefit those four properties moving forward in terms of any development that might occur.
And over time, this area will develop, much of the city will, probably at a slower pace, but at least it'll be in place, so. Okay. Seeing no other questions? Motion.
Guzekowski makes a motion that the council adopt resolution 11944-060518. Final resolution authorizing water main improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties on the east side of 27th Street from West South Branch Boulevard to 975 feet south of West South Branch Boulevard. Project number 18104.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item seven is our next public hearing, and it also is consideration of special levy assessments to abutting properties for water mains, this time on both sides of East Forest Hill Avenue, approximately 2,900 feet west of Pennsylvania Avenue to approximately 1,300 feet west of Pennsylvania.
Public hearing number two is the city's intention to exercise its power under section 3.20 of the municipal code of the city of Oak Creek to levy special assessments upon abutting property for benefits conferred upon such property in the following location. Project number 18105, Water Main and Apprentices, both sides of East Forest Hill Avenue from approximately 2,900 feet west of South Pennsylvania Avenue to approximately 1,300 feet west of South Pennsylvania Avenue, dated this 1st day of May, 2018.
Ron, any commentary before I make the three calls?
The only comment I would have is, this one is a more so a fire flow situation. So if, if you look on the far east side, there's a fire hydrant there, where we're getting about 25 PSI, which is significantly lower than we'd like it to be. And we'd like to connect those two areas so that we have better flow and fire flow and fire protection in that neighborhood.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, we'll make three calls. This is the first call. Second call. Third and final call.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
I'd just like to note that the city staff received correspondence from Sarah Tumson at Milwaukee County Parks. She's the interim chief of planning and development regarding the topic, so I'll forward that on to City Clerk Reski for the record.
Third and final? That was it? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and move on to item eight, and it's consideration of the resolution authorizing that water main. Questions, comments from council? Alderman Kirkowski. Alderman Kirkowski, for the first district, I'll probably take away some of Rich's comments too, because prior to the meeting, Ron, Rich and I had some questions that Ron, I think, satisfactorily answered my questions with regards to the properties and how this was going to flow. And I only have one property owner affected by this, and I haven't received any, any comments, but we were told that the property owners were notified of the public hearings. And I think it's a good idea simply to connect these, connect the dots here on this map and get a better flow of water. Thank you, Ron, for that before the meeting, and that's all I have.
Yep. Ron Alderman Dukenyak, again, prior to the start of the council meeting, you were providing us with some information. $390,000 was the estimated total cost of the project. Alderman, Steve and I each have one resident that are affected by this. Can you give us the approximate cost to each of those residents? We were, we were about to do that when the meeting began.
Sure. If you look at your map, 1436 will be approximately $14,700, and 1221 will be approximately $15,100. That will be a 20-year payback.
Rich, for what it's worth, that was $735 a year for, for my resident, for 20 years.
I mean, again, I received no input or, or no calls from that resident in regard to this project.
Mike?
Alderman Tillman. Ron, what, I see the total cost, 390. What does the utility actually...
Well, if, if you include all the assessments, we're playing, we're still paying about 60% because this is a, this is not a dig job. This is a directional drill job. That just, that, and that tends to skyrocket your linear foot cost. So in this case, we're paying about 60% of the total cost. Now, if, if, if there's, if some of the assessments aren't made, then we'll pay, pay a little bit more.
And 60% number holds true for the last one.
I think we're about 50% on the last one.
Thank you.
Ron Alderman Dukenyak, one more time. We had discussed the additional assessments to Milwaukee County. Some of the other board members may want to interject something. I mean, is that something that we typically do? We'll assess Milwaukee County? And, and then again, do we receive payment from them? Oh? Yes?
No, based on utility history, the answer is yes and no. We have assessed them, we have received money, and we haven't assessed them and haven't received money. So Melissa wants to expand upon that, by all means.
Thank you. Melissa Carles, city attorney. My point, if this is part of the question, I guess Alderman Dukenyak, is can we assess the county? Yes, we can. I think that that's clear. There are any number of projects, I suppose, that we could point to, but I think Ron hit the nail on the head in terms of the response. There are very few limited exceptions where a private or a public property would not be subject to a special assessment. So I don't know that that's the nugget of the question as much as just the fact of it is, this is the project that's proposed. I would submit that the council can make whatever decision it determines in terms of whether there is a benefit conferred on the properties at issue and that are being proposed to be assessed. Certainly, our utility engineer is here in his report indicating that there is a benefit conferred on those properties.
Thank you.
The answer is yes.
Bottom line, we don't get any money from them.
Well, what is the bottom line? So are we going to assess?
We should. Why wouldn't we?
Well, let me just interject one thing. Even if you don't assess, we fall under the rules of the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. Under those rules and under state statute, even if we don't assess, up to 10 years after that water main is installed, or before that water main is installed, anybody that connects to it will have to pay a connection fee. So you're looking at a de facto deferred assessment. So whether you assess them now, or they, within 10 years, somebody builds a ball field with a bathroom, a couple of bathroom stalls that need water, they will pay at that time the connection fee. Now, after 10 years, that's the statute of limitations. So we got, we got 10 years.
A strategic plan for year 11 to do the development.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Anyone else?
I guess I still have a question. Because the burden of proof is, has to be advantageous for that property?
Well, I guess somebody would have to give me a pretty good argument why the water is not benefiting that property.
Okay.
In this case, nobody can really predict the future. There's, those are some pretty big plots of land there. I mean, anything could happen. The land could divide, the city could, somebody could buy it, somebody could develop it, whatever the case might be. But that water makes that property more, more developable, even though it's a county property right now.
And Ron, I, again, Alderman Dukenyak, you had given us a formula of what the expense would be to each property owner based upon the amount of the frontage.
Mm-hmm.
So do you have, or quick math or an estimate of what that county assessment, or the assessment to the county would be? It appeared on that map that you showed us, that's a pretty big stretch of, of line that's going across their property.
Milwaukee County Parks, $96,474.55.
One side.
That's all. All, all the property, all the Milwaukee County property.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Is that me? That's the ghost of Milwaukee County.
Any other comments, questions? Steve?
Mayor Alderman Kirkowski, if the question is still out there, I think, Ron, we've assessed them in the past, these government entities. Sometimes they paid, sometimes they haven't, so I don't see why we should do anything different, just to send them an assessment, and it either gets filed or whatever.
Correct, sir.
If that question is out there.
No further discussion? Motion on eight, please.
Steve.
Kirkowski make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11945-060518. Final resolution authorizing water main improvements and levying special assessments against benefited properties on both sides of East Forest Hill Avenue from 1,250 feet west of South Pennsylvania Avenue to 2,950 feet west of South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
And our last one of the night is consideration of a transshipping depot and truck engine repair on the property at 9880 South Ridgeview Drive. And I see Timoretti has it up there, so Catherine, will you please read that in?
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Pedrick Merrick, Merrick Investments, Inc., for a conditional use permit for a transshipment depot facility and truck engine repair on the property at 9880 South Ridgeview Drive. The applicant is Pedrick Merrick, Merrick Investments, Inc. Property owner is Inco Holdings LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is April 25, 2018.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doug Seymour, the director of community development for the city, and this is a public hearing on a request for a conditional use permit for the property in 9880 South Ridgeview Drive. The applicant is requesting approval of this conditional use for a transshipment depot and truck engine repair for this facility, again, on South Ridgeview Drive. Under our code, under the M1 manufacturing code, freight yards, freight terminals, transshipment depots, and automobile, truck, and engine body repair are conditional uses in the M1 zoning district. This property, as evidenced by the exhibit on the screen before you, is already developed with an existing building, the loading dock and parking lot in the South Branch Industrial Park. Per the applicant's narrative, the existing building would be used for offices and a light duty repair shop for the company's trucks. There would be no outdoor storage of materials other than the proposed semi-truck parking, but there would actually be, excuse me, four spaces. The truck engine repair would be limited to those of the fleet or the company itself, so nothing beyond that. The Plan Commission has recommended approval of this conditional use, and it is a public hearing, so I'll let Dan all three times, and I'll spare my voice.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug stated, this is a public hearing. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call. Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to consideration of the ordinance for that conditional use permit, and we'll open it up for questions, comments from the council. Chris?
Alderman, Guzekowski, sixth district. I just want to point out that we did hash this out pretty well at Plan Commission on a couple of occasions. They've met everything that we've asked for, and we look forward to welcoming this neighbor back into the business park.
Oh, seeing no further discussion? Motion.
Guzekowski make a motion that the common council adopts ordinance 2901 and ordinance to approve conditional use permit for a transshipment depot facility and truck engine repair on the property at 9880 South Ridgeview Drive.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much, and good luck. That's going to be a good fit down there. New business. We start out with some informational, our summarized treasury report. We don't have Barb with us tonight. Are you filling in there, Bridget? Okay. Is everybody taking a look at, at their report? If there's any questions, Bridget can help us out. If not, we do have the monthly update going on, and basically it's just beginning balances, and you know, it's all tax-collected and taxes paid out. Did I get that right? It's important money, though. Any questions? Okay. We will move on from item 11, and we'll go to 12, and that is consideration of a mayor oral appointment to fill Bob Basetti's position in Police and Fire. If you would, please take a look over, and it's Dennis Lukaski. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Motion, please.
Guzekowski makes a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment for Dennis Lukaski to Police and Fire Commission to complete five-year term, expiring on 4/2020.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lurik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Great. And I'd like to personally thank Dennis for stepping up to fill that position. We look forward to good things from Dennis, so thank you for your time and experience. Item 13, consideration of a motion for our vendor summary report. And that one, we have Bridget with us. Everybody take a look, please. We have a question. This might, might be you, Mike. Floating island repairs, item number two. Is that part of our warranty, part of the original contract?
It's my understanding that the warranty had run out. The islands were installed two years ago, and so we paid for the repair fully. The cost reflected in the vendor summary report is more than just the repair cost. It is also the contract that we have for maintenance of the plantings in the wetland parks, so that is not the full cost.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Not motion, please.
Kirkowski make a motion that council approve the May 30, 2018 vendor summary report in the combined total of $516,750.44.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurik.
Aye.
Item 14 is consideration of a master service agreement for the city of Oak Creek and the Vision website redesign. And with us tonight, we've got our IT manager, Kevin. Good job, Kev.
Sorry. Per the council meeting on May 15, item number 13, staff negotiated the contract with Vision for the website redesign services. During the negotiations, we actually reduced the price from the $53,790 that was approved to the $48,790. This project is part of the city's strategic action plan. Annual fees will be covered through the annual budget. The initial cost, again, is covered under funds that the city administrator set aside as part of the strategic action plan.
Questions for Kevin? I guess I'll lead with one. How did you manage to get them down in price from 53 to 48?
Vision was actually purchased by Granicus, which is another government software entity, so they restructured their pricing a little bit. And then they also bumped us up a level, so we got additional features and the price reduced. And then we also renegotiated how we were going to handle the library's website.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to say, usually amenities drop with price, but it sounds like we're pretty fortunate, timing-wise. Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, how, we've gone through some redesigns of the website within the last year or so, so going back three, four years up to now, how, I mean, how's the website doing? I mean, how many, you keeping track of hits and things like that, or people getting, are you getting any feedback from that?
We, most of our viewer, visitors to the website are mobile. About 76% of the visitors are doing it on their cellular devices. Desktop usage has fallen significantly over the past couple of years. Most of the comments that we have received from the website, from residents and staff alike, are, it is not very user-friendly to find information on our current website. That's one of the things that we looked at for the new vendor, was to have better search capabilities. Our current one limits you to a search for every, I think it's 60 seconds, so once you search once, you have to wait a minute before you can search again. So it's, it's kind of dated in that aspect.
I, I guess I will echo that a little bit, because I, I often go to the city website, and it's, I often blame my, don't laugh too, too hard, but I still have Home Vista on my home computer, and I sometimes blame that. But sometimes you have, more isn't always good, because it just gets convoluted, complicated, or confusing. So I look forward to something a little faster, maybe a little easier to navigate, and maybe next year I'll have a better operating system at home.
I too think it's, Alderman, Guzekowski, it is difficult to navigate, you know, whether you're on mobile or a desktop. It's, I've heard more complaints about it than I could imagine, or ever thought I would, so I'm looking forward to the change.
And the Vision will also be doing a survey as part of the initial redesign, so they'll be reaching out to staff and residents and businesses to see how they utilize their current website and what they want to change.
Further questions for Kevin? Motion.
Kirkowski make a motion that the council approve the master service agreement between the city of Oak Creek and Vision for website redesign and hosting services.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 15 is consideration of a resolution approving a 25-foot water main east... Item 15 is consideration of a resolution approving a 25-foot water main easement by and between HSI Drexel Ridge 2 LLC in the city of Oak Creek. Mike, that falls to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is for the Drexel Ridge apartment complex. There is a water distribution system that is located in and amongst the buildings. It is located under the paving areas. These paving areas are private roadways. The only public infrastructure that is within the apartment complex is the water distribution system, so the city's utility needs to be able to access to flush hydrants and perform other maintenance duties. So this easement is 25 foot wide. It is centered along the alignment of the water main and will provide the needed access to maintain and eventually rebuild that water main.
Questions for Mike?
Kirkowski make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11946-060518, a resolution approving a 25-foot water main easement by and between HSI Drexel Ridge 2 LLC in the city of Oak Creek.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski has left the meeting. Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 16 is consideration of a storm sewer water management practice maintenance agreement with I Kenosha LLC for the 6th and Drexel development located at South 6th Street and West Drexel Avenue.
We seem to be having these at all the council meetings, and I guess that goes hand-in-hand with the pace of development. This is the standard storm water management maintenance agreement that is required of all new developments, and in fact, this is one of three on the agenda tonight. This one is for the ICAP development at the 6th and Drexel location, and again, it is the agreement that assures that they will take care of their stormwater maintenance management facilities. These are generally the detention ponds.
Are pavers included in that when we have them? We were specific about.
They are when they are a part of the development. Frankly, I can't tell you if there are pavers associated with this one.
Yeah, we had them put pavers down there.
On the ICAP part of it, so that would include that, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Seeing none, motion. Kirkowski will make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11947-060518, a resolution approving a storm water management practices maintenance agreement with I Kenosha LLC for their 6th and Drexel development located at South 6th Street and West Drexel Avenue.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 17 is consideration approving another stormwater management best practice agreement with East Rossin Avenue LLC for their Rossin Avenue Business Center located at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
So same explanation as the last item, and this is for that development in the northeast quadrant of Rossin and Howell Avenue.
Questions for Mike? Seeing none, motion. Kirkowski will make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11948-060518, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with East Rossin Avenue LLC for their Rossin Avenue Business Center located at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 18 is consideration of a resolution approving the Rossin Avenue Business Center Development Agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Mike?
So this agreement is the, covers the public improvements required for this development, again, at the northeast quadrant of Rossin and Howell Avenue, the Rossin Avenue Business Park development, and the basically assures that the developer pays for the public improvements, installs them, allows for city inspection of the construction as it takes place, and funds the cost of that work. The public improvements associated with this development are water main and sanitary sewer out in Rossin Avenue, and then across the site there is private sanitary interceptor sewer. It's private, and yet it does need to be inspected in accordance with city and MMSD standards. So again, that's why that's in the agreement, because of the inspection effort and the costs associated with that, so.
Questions for Mike on this one? Seeing none, motion? Kirkowski make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 11950-060518, approving the Rossin Avenue Business Center Development Agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Caught me off guard there. Item 19 is consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with Oakview Industrial Properties 3 LLC for their Oakview 3 development located at 10861 South Howell Avenue. Mike?
Again, the standard stormwater maintenance agreement, and this is for Oakview Industrial Properties 3. This is the Arenas America development on Howell Avenue, fronts on Howell Avenue, south of Oakview Business Park, south of the Stella Chui site.
Questions regarding this property? Seeing none, roll call. Or motion, sorry. I'm just rolling right along, I'm going right into it. Motion, please.
And Dukenyak move to approve resolution number 11949-060518, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Oakview Industrial Property 3 LLC for their Oakview 3 development located at 10861 South Howell Avenue.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Great. Item 20, it's consideration of, consideration to approve the issuance of a building permit for the construction of a residential building without a street improvement completed for the properties, the property at 928 East Forest Hill Avenue. Mike?
So, comments on this one? My understanding is the request to build a residential home on 928 East Forest Hill, and that's the graphic up on the screen. That is a property that does not have frontage on Forest Hill itself. It is a large vacant parcel. It would, I guess firstly, last November, the council did approve a realignment of the officially mapped streets in the area. That was to accommodate the desire for this home to be constructed somewhere in this area, the northeast portion of that larger parcel. And so I guess the progress is in favor of this home going in, but like to make the council aware that there is, what you see here is a half-road right-of-way that exists. It's 40 foot in width currently there is, and it's kind of hard to see, but there's an outline. This is the alignment of a long gravel driveway that serves this single home, and my understanding then, that the desire would be to have the home constructed here, and then this be a shared driveway so that there's access for that new house. That's, it's a little complicated, because that would be a private shared driveway in a public road right-of-way, and the code states that to build a home on a parcel such as this, fronting a public right-of-way, that the road needs to be constructed to a minimum of two inches of paved asphalt, but that it'd be really improved to a public road. So to do that would be a major undertaking, and probably squelch those plans for a single-family home. The second half of the, the east half of that road right-of-way would need to be acquired, that's purchasing, you know, anywhere from 20 to 40 foot strip of land along that property line, and then of course constructing the road. So I mean, that would be in excess of half a million dollars, just for the road construction itself. So that is the, I guess that's the ask here by the property owner, and the code does provide that the council can waive that requirement for the construction of the road.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, I'm going to ask you a favor, and I ain't going to ask you to repeat everything you did, but when you're up there with the laser pointer, we don't have the ability to see it. So is everybody on council clear which road we're talking about on this map? It's shaded one.
Almost in the center of the graph.
Almost the one in the center of the graph. You can see the single home up there on the parcel to the left, and then the big vacant square one, and I believe it's 1321 is where the home is going to be constructed. I know Mike did a nice description out there, but we don't all get to see it, so can you run, do you have the capability of running the mouse up there, the cursor?
I do, and if you can see it now, I just got a quick lesson by Tim. So here's that gravel driveway, and this long strip is that public road right-of-way.
No, we're still not catching it.
You're not catching it?
I just want to make sure council's clear as to what we're looking at. But before we discuss it, we do have a citizen wishing to speak, so Christina, would you like to come up? We just need your name and address for the record, please.
Christina Mayach, 140 West Rainbow Ridge Drive, apartment 1107 in Oak Creek.
Laura's yours.
So we have been always intending to build on this parcel. We've really been looking at it the last two years. Last summer, we started working on it, and as you mentioned, November, we had that road removed. So this is the first, we're hearing that there might be some inability for us to build, and we've put a lot of time, a lot of money into this already, so if the city is not willing to develop the road, we ask that you maybe consider another alternative, or let us keep the road as is and extend it somehow. We're just asking that you look at other alternatives and help us to be able to build this house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. As you can see, Doug, I don't know if you have any input into this, but this really goes back, all the way back to the 60s, actually.
Yeah, and typically, I mean, I would hope that, under the present administration, that we would not be approving lots without access to public streets, as this is evidence of what can happen when you do that. This fact remains, though, that this lot does exist, has existed, and has some rights with respect to the buildability of it under the land revision that was done back in 1972. But with that in mind, you know, I don't know that we would, at this point, consider vacating that, given that it is part of the larger neighborhood street map. We would want to take a more comprehensive look at that, how that road network serves that entire neighborhood. But my thought was, and I don't know, Mike, if it's common to have, since the improvements, the private improvements will be in the public right-of-way, will there be a maintenance agreement with those property owners?
That's, that's something that I have heard has been discussed in the past on this subject, and probably something that would need to be, you know, thought entirely through and considered to, to be made solidified through an agreement, yes.
But we'd need the agreement in place.
I don't think you'd need it in place, that this, before you take action this evening, but I mean, I think it just, it's, you know, just to safeguard the city, obviously, if, since those improvements, those private improvements are in our right-of-way, that if for some reason there's, the present or future owners don't come back to us and say, well, it's in your right-of-way, you fix it. That's what we're trying to protect ourselves from.
Okay. Questions from the council? Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, 1st district. So I've seen that the one house was built back in 1968, and who has been, has the city been doing anything with this since then? Has it essentially been like a private gravel road since then? And I know, I see that there was comments made that potentially, potentially it could have access to Aben Shyne, but if, say we didn't have this matter on the agenda tonight, and we suddenly decided that we were going to build or have access to a new and improved Aben Shyne Park, and we wanted to use this, we'd be on the hook for building a road into Aben Shyne and the property? The one house that's here would basically benefit from us building a road into Aben Shyne? I know it's a big what-if.
If I may, a couple of things would need to happen. We need to acquire the eastern half of that right-of-way, and I don't have the graphic up here, but, so additional right-of-way would mean to be obtained.
Right, right, I understand that.
And, you know, potentially, if that were the case, there is developable property, which would be on both the east and west side of that. If the city were to go through that process, they might have an option available to partially special assess that. I mean, there are a number of options that the city could go through, and depending on if and when and how they chose to develop that suddenly access to the park.
Okay, so any future development that goes back to the 60s that was planned for this is, we could go another 20, 25 years and not do anything, which is just, because we don't know how Aben Shyne Park is going to develop, we don't know how all that. So basically, we're just, they're asking to build a house on a gravel road that they've been maintaining for 40-plus years that the city may or may not do anything with, and may or may not ever do anything with. It may just always stay a gravel road, right? So I understand everybody's viewpoint, and Doug, I appreciate your comments about what was done back then, and we shouldn't allow these things to happen now, but personally, I, I don't see a problem with letting them build a, build a house here, and as the potential road gets developed, then we just, everybody has to understand, we just got to deal with it when it happens, and whatever the cost may be, the cost may be, but I don't want to shoot down somebody building a house on land that probably has minimal tax value, in my opinion.
Excuse me, I think the perspective is, the city doesn't foreclose on any future potential here by allowing this building permit.
Right.
That's, I think to sum it up, we still have every option available to us in the future. Those are completely unforeseen at this point.
And I agree with that.
But that's exactly what you were saying.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, Mike, sorry.
I would just like, the terminology of it being a gravel road makes me a little uncomfortable. It really is a gravel, private driveway, that's what it's been functioning as, and Doug brings up an excellent point, that this maintenance agreement really absolutely needs to be part of this, and it should be put into the motion, and that's where there's the definition of this being to accommodate traffic to these specific properties, that they will be the parties maintaining.
I'm going to take the privilege of asking legal if we should put it into motion, or not. So your opinion, please, Melissa?
I think, yes, I would, the property developers here, having spoken, I mean, the bottom line is, I think that this is the time that's going to come before the council for a decision. It's ripe to proceed on their part, they've been working at this for a while. I would submit to the council that in the time that I've been here- I would submit to the council that, in the time that I've been here, this has been an issue that I think for city staff, we have not let it go. We've been aware of it. It's an issue in terms of the fact that this is part of the official map, in terms of that reservation or dedication, not interchangeable, but for a future public roadway. And to that extent, this length of use of that roadway as a driveway, as a private road, I don't want to go far afield, but I think there are a number of issues here. One of them is liability in terms of the maintenance of this pathway. So, if it is possible to come to some terms, and I think that it would be in terms of the past use of this roadway with the private developer and the city in terms of a maintenance agreement, perhaps the motion could be approval of the issuance of a building permit, so on and so forth, with the understanding or the entering into of a agreement for use, maintenance, and snow plowing of this area within 60 to 90 days. That would be my suggestion. I think that that's probably helpful to the developer as well, just in terms of expectations, in terms of access. I think that all of this history in terms of what was reserved for public street purposes as a portion of that roadway is part of the explanation, and I think that there's been good discussion tonight in terms of advising the council that if and when there is some development, it's going to be at some significant cost. How that's undertaken is a different question, and it's one another. Yes.
That was a good yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Alderman Kerkowski. Mike, or maybe the potential developer, I'm assuming that the snow plowing and any grading or any type of maintenance that's been done on this private drive has been by the property owners that, that live, you know, adjacent to it, or that are alongside it. So, essentially, we're looking at a maintenance, we're reducing that to writing, correct? And then, something changes on behalf of the city, then, then things change.
That is correct.
Okay, can we ask if the developers could come up and see if they have a problem with that? Is that acceptable?
I think it would be the owner.
Or the owners, whoever wants to build?
Is that acceptable? Do you understand?
Yes, we understand, and that sounds reasonable to us.
Within our motion, we'll go off the suggested language that Melissa suggested. 60 to 90 days. 90 days, you want, Steve, 60? How soon you want to get in there?
Soon as possible.
Let's go.
Then 90 days.
Then 90?
Good.
That driveway shared at all, right now?
No.
All right, I agree with the city attorney. I've seen these before, and it's a good idea. There can be complications down the road, depending on who you share this driveway with later on. I've seen some pretty nasty situations.
There actually, if I may, there is actually another, another property to the east that does have access to that, although that same property has access to Forest Hill as well, so.
Property directly to the east there, to the?
Actually, a little bit south.
To the south? Okay. Do you have access to that road now?
The stall, the stall property.
How does that work?
It's not shown on the map, but yeah.
With the maintenance agreement, how does that work? If they're already sharing it?
We will take that into consideration. I think that the matter that's before the council tonight is related to this piece of it, but I think it is a global solution that you're intimating we should derive, so we will try to do that, and if there are necessary conversations to have with the additional property owner, we'll do that. If it's such that the property owner before us has undertaken and is willing to continue undertaking the maintenance obligations that have been in place, that would be acceptable to the city as well. Not putting more burden, not extrapolating anything else, just suggesting that if it's covered between the present applicant and the city, I would say that we could probably maintain that in writing.
I don't want to muddy the waters, but does the owner of parcel one have to agree to the maintenance agreement also? Because your parcel two, the new house, parcel one would be the other property. Okay, so we'd have to... Good.
Good.
I think we're good.
Okay, then, motion, please. I'm sorry. Can we get your name and position there for the record?
Chief Tom Rosendich, Oak Creek Fire. Just, just be aware that these homes that are built off these roads like this, I know we don't have a lot of say-so because of the state law and change in the way that roads are in, the design manual has to be met, and things to that effect, that this can be an issue for us. And there's no guarantees that we're gonna be able to get there, whether it's a snow, rain, mud, road, you know, we got a ladder truck that weighs 70,000 pounds. We can't put it up there. These fire trucks are 35 tons, too. So, there are issues with building these, these houses way off in the beaten path, and this isn't the only one. Alrick's house, as an example, is 1,700 feet from 27th Street. That's our closest hydrant is out on the street. And you look what happened just, just the other day on Elm Road, when we do have areas of the city that do not have hydrants or anything like that closer, there is an issue. There can be an issue on an EMS site. If somebody is hurt on that property, how do we get in there safely? Because sure, this is all nice and neat for the first three, four years, but now you put 20 years of tree growth and everything else in there, not only are we potentially delayed in the response, we're also wrecking our apparatus by being scratched up and dinged up, what we're trying to preserve for 20-some years. So, overall, be vision-thinking, and look at roads that meet the urban suburban area, not this rural type of development.
Very good points, chief, very good points. And those are points well taken, without a doubt. We just did have a very serious fire there. They didn't have adequate water, and that was a multi-alarm fire. Any questions or comments regarding chief's comments? Again, I would, I would venture to say, the chief, the chief is correct in it. Maybe in time, we should look at something jointly that could possibly be done to improve that road, just for the protection of our own staff and equipment. Doesn't mean it has to be done now, but I think the chief brings valid points to it. We gotta find a compromise point that works. So, he's correct, though. Brings up some very valid points. We don't want to endanger anybody's life either by not being able to get at them. So, these are points we have to consider. And, and if there's a washout, it'd be tough. I mean, I'm, I'm still fine with going ahead with motion myself, even though I don't vote on it, but I, I think his points are very well taken, and we really do have to look at this in the future, considering what Oak Creek's blossoming into. Any other comments?
Alderman Toman, just to back up a little bit, Mike, on what you said, that you weren't comfortable with the gravel language here. Am I of the understanding that this thing will get paved with asphalt? As this reads, or would that be in the future, or how would that work?
The ordinance reads that the road must be improved. Now, it does mention no less than two inches of bituminous pavement. Some of these are a bit antiquated terms, but it does require curmudgeon, if that is, if that is the road section, you know, the gravel subbase. So, basically, the intent of the code is that get that public road built to public road standards. Again, that is a huge cost. I don't, I'm gonna go out on a limb and, and think that the, the property owner here does not want to venture down that pathway. Again, it's probably a deal killer for them, and building a single-family home and, and a half-million-dollar road. So, you may want to bring her back up, but I think their intention is to have that road remain, to have that driveway remain gravel.
Mayor?
Yes?
Alderman Kerkowski. So, I think this is a question for the city attorney. Making a motion to approve the building permit would therefore not be under the section of the municipal code. It would simply be allow them a building permit, correct? So, we would, the motion would have to be made with the agreement to enter into a maintenance agreement, but it would not be under the municipal code, is that correct?
It is in part. This is actually a call-out for a specific section of the building code in Chapter 15. This is 15.12-sub-D-sub-1 is actually an exception for issuance of a building permit to a regular, if that makes sense, so.
Well, the motion would be pursuant to that section.
It would be pursuant to that section if it were the motion as stated on the agenda, the additional language could be with the issuance, subject to the developer entering into an agreement for use, maintenance, and snow plowing of this area that's been dedicated for public street purposes, but has not yet been opened for public travel.
Seeking counsel under a variance under municipal code, correct? They're seeking a permit, a variance to the municipal code for a building permit, which the motion would be pursuant to entering into a maintenance agreement within 90 days of the road.
It is, and I don't want to mince words, but I think it is critical to say that it would be under the 15.12-sub-D1. If you're going to cite a section, it wouldn't actually be a variance before the council. It's a variance to the code, but I don't want to use that for the concept of literally a variance, so.
Okay.
1512.
Make a mention of that code, that municipal code, in the motion.
Sure, or I can state it and you can...
Go for it.
When you're ready.
If we're all ready.
All right, are we ready for a motion, or anybody else have comments? Greg?
One quick question, mayor. So, if this road in a few years gets developed, either the city...
Technically, I do.
If the current driveway is developed by the city in a few years, so that it is a paved road, either the city pays for the cost of developing that to benefit the couple homes, possibly the park, or is there a special assessment that's done?
From what? The options would be, I mean, whatever is available with the council at that point in time. If, I mean, if your policy is to allow for special assessments, much like you do for water and sewer, I mean, that'd be an option that'd be available to you. And this action in and of itself does not foreclose any potential future action by the common council.
Clearing that up, Doug. Okay? All right, I think we're ready.
So, this would be a motion to approve the issuance of a building permit under Section 15.12-sub-1-sub-D of the municipal code for the construction of a residential building without the street improvement completed for the property at 928 East Forest Hill Avenue, with the issuance subject to the developer entering into an agreement for use, maintenance, and snow plowing of this area that has been dedicated for public street purposes, but has not yet been opened to the public for travel.
Kerkowski will make the motion as stated by the city attorney.
Toman will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Okay. Item 21 and 22 are with the licensing committee, so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Alderman Kerkowski.
Thank you, mayor. Item 21 is a council report with regards to the issuance of the licenses, the alcoholic beverage licenses that were requested. If everybody had an opportunity to look at them, if there are no questions, or if there are, let me know. If not, I'll proceed. Okay, seeing no, seeing none. Kerkowski will make a motion that the council grant the 2018-19 renewal alcoholic beverage license request as listed on the June 1, 2018 License Committee Report with issuance subject to final inspection approvals listed and payment of any fees due.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And item 22 is a similar common council report with regards to variance license requests. Does anybody have any questions with regards to the individuals or companies listed on it? Okay, seeing none. Kerkowski will make a motion that the council grant the various license requests as listed on the June 5, 2018 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Okay, before we adjourn, just a couple messages for people that are streaming and the few that are still watching. Thank you to our staff. You guys were really well-prepared tonight. It showed in the speed in which we went through this, and even where we had questions, they got ironed out really well. And also, from the IT perspective, thank you very much for everything you did, because you make these meetings go a lot easier. Also, want to thank all the staff that came out this weekend and helped at Farmers Market and the Beer Garden this weekend. We had a lot of city staff out there working. Leslie was out there, Catherine, Mike visited for business appreciation, even our city administrator was there working, so. Thank you for everybody that was out there. From all indications, it was a good success, and everybody enjoyed it. Also, our Farmers Market kicked off, and will continue every Saturday morning from 9 till 1, right out here in the square. So, if you didn't have a chance to catch the opening weekend, it'll continue on. We actually made, on Channel 12, with that one. And then, we won't meet again, but Summer Solstice is coming up, Father's Day weekend here in the square. So, lots of things going on in the city. Appreciate all the help we get from streets to make this happen, because none of that happens without your tutelage, so. Thank you very much. So, again, get out there, discover, and celebrate Oak Creek. With that, adjournment.
Kerkowski can make a motion to adjourn.
Toman, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Thank you, good night.